Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Lamar County School Board. It's February 8th, 2021. We're gathered here together live stream. I would like to point out that Dr. Hampton is joining us via phone. He's not able to be here in person today, but he is present at the meeting. Before we get started, I'd ask Mr. Rasm will he now please say word for it?
Your Lord, we come to you this evening. We ask for your wisdom, your blessing, as we discuss the business of the Lamar County School District with our faculty and with our children that we're responsible for. We just want to thank you for the blessings you've given us. We ask you also to bless our nation. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, just as you ask. Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
With the legends, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't pursue our meeting procedures. It seems that if you have not already been approved to be on our agenda tonight, we will not be allowed to speak. We do have copies of the agenda in the back if you need. Item number three is approval of the general agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make my own.
Do you need to have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number four is recognition. So we have this Theresa Jenny here to present those.
I'm excited to recognize Suzanne Altman and 36-member cast and crew from Oak Grove High School who worked against all adversities this year to win their 11th state championship with their production of scenes from Arabian Nights. We can't have all 36 kids here unfortunately, but Suzanne is here. She is in her 25th year as the theater director and teacher at Oak Grove High School. Suzanne has been honored with the AIM Award for Best Theater Director in Mississippi, the Alan R. Barton Award for Outstanding Teaching, the Thad Cochran Distinguished Arts Educator, and as a master teacher. This is her 11th time to be honored with the state title of best director. And you can see her awards here, these plaques. In her time at Oak Grove, the theater department has been honored to perform at the largest theater festival in the world four times in Edinburgh, Scotland. They won national titles, multiple state awards, hundreds of individual awards, 12 times representing Mississippi at their national competition, and 10 previous state championships. I'm excited for Suzanne and her team.
Everyone get a picture. All ready? Mask, no mask, what you want?
We have to wear a mask, I think. Okay, sorry. No, it's totally fine. My mask is a mask for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate your service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it. We're on to the next.
Okay.
All right. Item number five is our speaker flag, Mr. Michelle Carter with the Department of Wildlife and Forestry.
Can I attach this to the...
Yes.
The hot seat right there. Right here. Based that way or this one?
There you go.
I appreciate y'all letting us have the opportunity to come and tell you about this program. Our department, five years ago, started a pilot program to just get kids outdoors. And I was an educator for 20 years, so to me, anything that keeps kids busy that's positive is a good thing. Because if we just let them do their own thing, then they're going to tend to find things to do that aren't necessarily positive. So in saying that, when I say e-gaming, I'm for it. If a kid enjoys e-gaming, and I'm so glad we have it, but from the department standpoint, we want to get kids back outside. And with the technology that we have today, they tend to stay indoors. So that was the reason we began the program. Now, what the program is, is a speed trap and sporting play shooting competition. So I know if you say firearms in school, it's like everybody tenses off and they're like, whoa, wait just a second. But I want to explain why we kind of approached it that way. Our department, field-wise in Mississippi, we have rural children that are going to be exposed to hunting and different things. Well, we want to make sure that when they are outdoors and they are hunting, that they're doing it properly and safely. And what better agency to teach them how to do that than us? So we created this program for that purpose. Now, part of the program is, we take every kid in the program and we certify them with hunter's education. So they will take a hunter's education course to be able to participate. We take the coaches that are going to participate and we certify them. Now, in most programs, like if I came to you and said, hey, I want your district to start volleyball or something like that, usually it's just, hey, you guys start volleyball. Our department decided that we don't want to go to the schools and say, hey, y'all do this. We want it to be our program that you're involved with. So I can assure you, it's never not going to be under us. We're going to make sure that the coaches certify, the kids are taught properly. We schedule the competitions. The competitions are held on our shooting ranges. Our conservation officers run the event, so you have law enforcement officers that are there the entire time. Safety is definitely like our most important part of this program. So usually with schools, the three biggest questions are liability, cost, and the season. So I'm going to address those three real quick and let you ask any questions. So you have a ton of information in the bags that we just gave you. So with liability, nothing transpired on campus. Everything that we do is on our ranges. If you choose to practice, you can practice on our ranges. You can practice on private ranges. You can practice on private landholders' land. So there's nothing that takes place on campus. That negates some of the liability of schools. But y'all know as well as I do, in the world we live in, there's always liability. So your insurance policy, if you have football on campus, that's considered as far as an insurance perspective, a high risk because of the climate. If you have football, I can guarantee this is covered under it. Now, when I say that, I tell every school board I talk to, you call your insurance company, you call your lawyer, you make sure. But so far, knock on wood, I'm batting an eye. I'm a lawyer. Yes. So check with whoever you need to check with, but it's covered by your insurance policy. We also recommend that you do the day policies, the school day policies, just offer it to the kids that are involved in the program. So liability is actually not as big an issue as people think that it is. The second thing is cost. And this is the great thing. The cost for the school is very minute. Now, you can make it as big as you want to. You can go get matching outfits from head to toe. You can have, you know, gun cases that cost hundreds of dollars. You can do all these things. But realistically, all you need to participate in this program is a shotgun, eye protection, and ear protection. That's really the only three things that are required. Because our department is going to help you get a YPI grant in April. It pops up and the schools are able to write a grant. So I'm going to use Summerall as an example. Or for your district, you've got Plumberton, you've got Summerall Middle and High, you've got Oak Grove Middle and High, and then you've got Curtis Middle and High. So all those schools can separately write a grant. Every new school is awarded a grant. Now, the amount varies from year to year depending on how many people apply for grants. I was in education. I have written grants that are a booklet, and I have written grants that are half a page. This is about two pages worth of questions. It's not a hard grant at all to write. Now, on top of it, we are in the middle of getting a new federal grant where we can, because of the shortage, I haven't told you this yet, the shortage of shells. It's kind of hard right now to come across any mention. So we decided that we could purchase commodities for the school to give it to them. So this next school year will be the first year that we've done this. We will actually purchase the shells and give to the coach and say, hey, here's even the shells. So one of the things that... And where's your superintendent? He cannot speak. He's on the phone. Okay, so we spoke the other day on the phone, and he said something that I absolutely love, because it was my philosophy. I was a coach back when I called, and his was the same thing. We never want a kid not to be able to participate in something because they can't afford it. So we want to do everything we can to make sure that every kid has the opportunity to do this, if it's something they want to do. So I feel like our department being able to purchase the shells will help with that, because honestly, that's probably the biggest expense of the program, is purchasing the shells. So there's your cost. We give you a grant to help you. We buy some of the material. So really, in all honesty, you could do this program for like, you know, $5 a kid for ear and eye protection, but they do have to have a shotgun. So that's one of the things the grant does not cover. The grant will not purchase a firearm purchase, and that's just because an entity like a school can't purchase a firearm.
So they might not have to be in their name because of the laws?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Like most people, we actually, I'm going to use Gun Town Middle. So if Connie is watching this amazingly, this board meeting that she shouldn't be watching because she's up north in Gun Town Middle, she is the best coach ever. So she's an eighth grade science teacher, and she took her kids and she grouped them in groups of three based on, these three, this one owned a shotgun. His dad owned the shotgun, but these two did not. So she put them in a group together and showed them how to shoot. And so as they went around the course, they weren't able to do that. So no, that does not happen in their name.
How many school districts are you in right now?
In your pack, you have a list of schools. I actually put the schools, whether they were public or private, whether they were north, central, or south Mississippi. And I also put the amount that they received for their grant that they wrote, so that you can kind of see how much money. We've got 54 schools in the program, and we're at half and half as far as public and private. Now, initially, private schools came on sooner just because they were more autonomous and they could make that decision on a local level. Whereas for the public schools, it is a process. You know, we talked to the coach, and then we talked to the principal, and then we talked to the superintendent, and then we talked to the board. So it just takes a little bit longer. We're now in our sixth year. We went from four schools with 30 students to this year, like we just ended our second tournament last week. We had 54 schools with 898 students. So the program has grown tremendously. It's extremely popular. And to me, it just gives the kids one more thing to do. You know, a seventh grade girl can compete against a 12th grade boy in this program. It's not like football or, you know. Our girls have done really well. We've got a girl this year that actually could win it all, even if she got a chance. So now that's your cost and your liability. Season is also important. It gets to a point where like in schools, you have so much going on, it's just not, it's too much. It's like an administrator having to juggle all these different sports. Part of the reasons the agency hired me is my education background. So when I look at the calendar to schedule these events, I'm taking into account if the school's on block scheduling, if they have state testing, if it is the state track meet weekend, if it's basketball season, football season, we take all of that into account before we do the schedule. So it's, the season is technically the entire school year. So if, but for us, and all this is in your packs, we shoot normally one time in November, normally one time in December. This December, it got pushed to February because of COVID. And then one time the state is in May. So they would only actually go to competitions three times a year. So it is very doable, and we wanted it to be that way so that the kids would not have to choose between, I'm going to play baseball or do this or basketball or do this. So, any questions?
Back to the liability thing. If there ever is an incident on your range during your time, does your insurance cover that? Or our insurance is still covering?
We can save this on camera. So technically, it would be our state. I'm not saying...
Jeremy, along with that, the state doesn't have insurance. It's a poor client.
It's a poor client.
So it's just, it's the tax money to the state, but there's caps on it, and there are multiple defenses that they give. So it is a very, very system that benefits us as a school district and it's wildlife and fisheries. So that's good.
I know Summerall's who's making requests for the broader board. Is there any limitation why we couldn't have offered at all of our schools other than...
No, we want to.
Somebody else.
Yeah.
I called Coach Hankins. Of course, it was right in the middle of football season. It got real busy. And I called a coach from March County. There's not many schools south of Jackson that's doing this. And we were contacted back in the fall. And so Coach Cameron, he's outside right now. He and I both went and got certified to take hunter's ed back in September. And then, so we tried to get the ball rolling in the fall, and we called the coach, and we had so many issues. We're just now trying to get back. But no, it would make our life easier if more schools got in, because now we can compete down south and not have to drive.
And I will say, we have three ranges in the state. One is in Pinellas, one is Central at Canton, and then Stone County in Wiggins is your closest. And so the goal of the program is to have kind of three regions, so that the southern teams, you just go to McHenry and Wiggins and compete at. The sporting play, we've actually contracted the contractor. That is beginning to be built. So at McHenry, you can go practice speed trap and five sand. And I know like you're not proficient in this, but five sand is like the sporting plays, except it's stationary. So you can do all your practicing at McHenry. How far is McHenry?
Thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five minutes. You can have, it's very, that's probably what I would suggest. Now, you can have parents that will say, hey, you come practice in my hayfield. And you know as well as I do, they incur that liability, you know, as the landowner.
One thing that needs to be mentioned is scholarships. When they, I'm going to bet you this, but when they, let's say my son is in, I'm going to use him in as an example. And he winds up winning as a ninth grader, fifth grader. When he wins an event like this, he gets money, but it's put into an account, it would be mine in my wife's name. If he graduates, he's able to get there. And it can go for whatever he needs. And so you said this year, the winner had over $6,000?
$6,000. So what we did, our foundation, we have a foundation, and they, you know, have allocated $10,000 a year. So in the May tournament, the state tournament in May, the kids that win, win in increments of $1,000. Well, we partnered with the Treasury Department when they bitched for it. And we started a back savings account. And it's actually beautiful, because you can't just give an athlete, you can't pay an athlete for winning something. But we can put that money into that college savings account, and it can accrue interest. And they can start winning in the seventh grade. And like you said, we had a kid that graduated this past year that had $6,000 plus interest. Now, if he had gotten an ACT scholarship, or his parents had done impact or different things, then that money just goes to him. You know, it does actually go through the university he's at or the junior college. If that child decided not to attend college, or he wanted to go get a plumbing degree or an electrical degree, then his parents only account. They can at that point upon graduation take the money out. So it's, there's not many sports out there that the kids can get college money before they ever graduate. So it is a very good program.
What did you tell us in September, the grant money, the lowest mountain was like 4,600?
Forty-eight. So new schools this year got 48. Now, I will tell you, it won't be that much. I wish. But we've got, just by being able to email schools, we've got 16 new schools coming on in August. And that's not counting you guys. So every time a new school comes on, of course, the piece of the pie gets a little bit smaller, because that YPI money is allocated by the legislator instead of me. So we're, it won't be 4,800, but it'll...
What are the initial costs it has to fund?
Sorry?
What are the initial costs that the grant has to fund?
For the school? Like what can we use it for? Uniforms? You can use it for uniforms, travel, shells, places to practice. You can pay for range time. The only thing, like I said, that you can't purchase is the firewall. You know, you can't do that. And you cannot, a laugh when I say this, you can't lease land.
Because that happened. When they first started this, you told us this, that there were some guys up north that leased the hunting land and used it as a practice facility. They bought side by sides and used it as transportation.
What we're hoping is, Long Lake right down here, what we're hoping is, we might practice there. That's something that's closer for us. Purpose would be here. If they could get on board in Oak Grove, it'd be great. Wouldn't it be here in Lamar County?
Coach Hankins can help you with that.
Yes. That's one of the reasons why I called Brad when I did.
And part of the reason that you're sweet superintendent, I had you quarantine, and I don't get to me. And part of the reason I was like, please let me come, is I wanted you to physically see me and me be able to tell you, we're not ever going to let go of your hand. I mean, with these kids shooting firearms, this is not something that we're going to say, okay, you guys got it. I mean, from the beginning, the inception of this program, whenever this program concludes, hopefully by the time I retire and you all retire, we will be there to make sure that we schedule it, we plan it, we staff it. So you don't have to worry about getting referees. You don't have to worry about scheduling. You don't have to worry about timing of venue. We take care of all of that for you.
Where's your office?
I'm in Jackson. So I'm technically statewide. I come down to McHenry quite often. And we do, we've got, we've got some kitchen for five counties that has started this year. We've got three from the south region. Our law enforcement region is divided into three, north, central, and south. We've got three in the south. I was headed to Hattiesburg on March the 17th, when I got the phone call to turn around and come back that we had closed to COVID. So we're just now starting to expand south. So you guys could be like, here's my...
Are you guys involved in the practice at all?
Not in the practice. Now, we do, like I said, certify them, and we get the kids ready. We tell them, you know, what to do. We give them guidelines, and then they go to practice. Now, if you want to come to our range, we are. You know, we've got range personnel that are there. But if you decided to practice like in a hayfield or somewhere, then, you know...
We have to have eight practices, bar none, before we can even go to the field. No questions asked. Like it's got to be documented, the whole thing.
And you said the hunting license course, they got credit for also?
Yes. Now, that is a cool thing, too. So just this October, the governor signed it into law in its House Bill 1577, that public schools can give a credit, that hunter's education can be a credited course. Well, this is really cool for a school district. All you have to do is pick up the phone and call me and say, I need material. We send you the material for free, everything you need to teach the class. We have certified you.
I'm certified to teach it, by the way. Just throwing that out there.
Yes. So we have certified your teacher to be able to do this now. And so that's just kind of an added benefit also.
But that's not just for those kids. And we could teach any student to go through that final step.
And all of our schools, the split deer hunting we have around there, all of our schools have kids that go, I know we have over 1,000 kids that go deer hunting. This is something that just would be so beneficial, to teach them the safety of how to do it before they go out the first time.
I mean, that's our, that's definitely our thought process. I mean, I don't want to hand my teenager a set of keys and say go drive without teaching them how to drive. And there's not a better agency that can teach them how to be safe with firearms or anything. And I will say, we have several outreach. I'm director of outreach programs. We have fisheries. We have wildlife and parks. We have museums. We have all these different agencies. This is the only outreach that we have that's under law enforcement. So it is solidly under law enforcement. We have our law enforcement officers who are involved in everything we do with this program. So it just kind of gives that added layer of security. And I really, in your bags, you have Mississippi Outdoors, our magazine that we put out. They wrote an article about the state tournament that had to take place in June this year because we couldn't in May, got pushed back a little bit for COVID also. So it was a phenomenal read. It's going to tell you all about the YPI, all about the competitions. Like I said, you have a sheet that lists the schools that are involved. Please reach out to them. I mean, that's the reason I did it, so that you could call those guys and say, hey, what do you think? And then you also see, and the reason some of the YPI money is a little bit less, is we've got schools that have written grants. They're in their sixth year of writing a grant. So every year, we lessen it just a little bit, because they should be established. But you would get a grant, you would get grant money for several years. And then you guys would actually benefit from having the shells and the plays purchased, which is a new thing that we're doing.
Dr. Hampton, anything you'll add?
No, I'm already spoken with it. Don't have any questions or anything to add at this point?
Okay. We appreciate y'all coming. Thank you so much.
Y'all have a good evening.
All right, we're going to move along to item number six, which is our approval of the January later 2021 minutes. I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I'm saying, do we not need to say that we're going to vote on that maybe next morning?
I'll let that be an administration decision. We'll get to vote again later at later some. Item number seven is the approval of the monthly financial report for December 2020. Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
My motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number eight is the approval to reinstate policy BBE, review of board policy. So I have a motion. So moved. I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number nine is our 16th section land manager matters and...
First item I have is to award agricultural bid for 40 acres, section 16, two north, 16 west. And one bid. From Caroline and Powell Smith. They bid $20 per acre for a total of $800.
Forty acres. Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'm moving to accept that bid.
Okay. Thinking Matt, I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
The next item is to award an agricultural bid for 16 acres, concession 16, two north, 16 west. There was one bid. This is from Robert Williams Jr. He bid $30 per acre for a total of $480.
Do we accept bid?
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item is to approve, advertise, and accept bids for hunting lease in session 16, two north, 15 west.
I have a motion. Put this out right now.
So moved.
Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item is to approve, advertise, and accept bids for hunting lease, session 16, one north, 16 west.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that passes.
I have a quick question. Those that expired, the current, the former leaseholder expired, they get to bid, or do they have the right to match the bid? Is that right?
That's right. They'll bid, and if they are outbid, then they have the option to match plus 10%.
Match plus 10%. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
The last item is to approve Mississippi Board Trip Commission recommendation for Bette O'Keever for the 78th final heart.
How many bids do we give for that?
One.
That's what you sent us earlier?
Yes.
Did everybody get it?
We had the notice this morning with board trip commission, and then he submitted recommendation later that I sent it. It was later. He said, I'd be on.
Everybody saw that? All right. So I'm going to go for a motion.
So I'm going to floor for motion.
I'm moving to accept that bid.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
All right, item number ten is a superintendent's report. And Suzanne Kelly, go ahead, stay.
I've got a few things to warn this, uh, this Kelly, if you can hear me, if you can hear me. You know, February is a busy, February is a busy month in education, and February is Black History Month. Once you know, we have several activities going on in the classrooms because, you know, COVID, we can't have many presentations with that. We do have several activities planned within the classroom, with our social distance in and mask and tanning and building our thing. I will plan to bring a report to the board next month of all the activities that we completed in regards to our Black History Month. We also have Ms. Kelly here for the National CTE Month. And, you know, they say a good leader is delegating. So I'm going to delegate a ton of my time to her and the superintendent's report. But before we get to that, this week, from the governor's proclamation, this week, February the eighth into twelfth, the school board recognition week in the state of Mississippi. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize our school board members. Also, school board member service is a job done for, from a heartfelt desire to improve the education. Our school board members work long hours, attending board meetings like this one, attending school activities, answering community questions, refining their governance skills, deciding tough, often emotional issues such as school closings, school calendars, dress code issues, attendance boundaries, and they regularly receive calls, texts, and emails from parents and community members, concerns and complaints. It is easy to see that our board members persist in working on behalf of our students with student achievement as their focus of their decisions. We want to recognize your efforts and show you our appreciation for what you do to help make this school district a better community for our students, our staff, our faculty, and our administrators. On behalf of the district, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for what you do for our districts. And I think, um, Ms. Jenny has some, uh, some things to show our appreciation for you guys. And those, uh, those items are all made, except for the coin, uh, the, the acrylic things are made with, in district through some of our laser and braver, bravery that we have brought in our country.
Thank you, Dr. Hampton. I think we're gonna get that picture with the acrylic made with the low forge, I think. We're going to go ahead and do that real quick if you'll wait for the next part. If we could get all you guys in front of the, um, the, uh, Lamar County sign up here.
Did you walk?
Don't take a picture of my shoes now. I had to work on my shoes on my dress.
Can we smile?
Yeah, smile. Smile with us.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Hey, Dr. Hampton, we're back there.
Okay, I'm gonna use my talk to Ms. Kelly. She's gonna kind of give you an overview of our CTE program. So I think she has some happy things for you all, so.
I do. I would like to thank you guys for allowing me to come and speak, and Dr. Hampton for giving me the opportunity. Mark has been very supportive of our CTE programs, and we are continuing to grow. I just wanted to give you a brief update. We now have eleven programs. Our law and public safety program did get approved last summer. So, and then they took it back for a little bit, and then they gave it back. So we actually started this January. It's at Purvis High School, and we are recruiting students from all four of the high schools. Any school can go there, so much to our center. And then in our center, we have quite a few programs. But the next, I did want to share, we moved one of our programs from the health science program to Oak Grove. And then our next hopeful program that we are looking at, I've met with the Mississippi State Research and Curriculum Unit, and with Robert Recity College, and we're looking at a, a version of an IT program that's software development. So I had a meeting with them back in November. I'm supposed to have another meeting this month. But it's, it's a dual credit program, so it requires that PRC comes on board too. So it may be a little delayed getting started, but we would like to host it, have it housed at Oak Grove High School, but then also have it remote for all, all of the high schools in the state, in the county to be able to attend. So that's kind of our plan, is to, moving forward, anything that we do bring on, we hope to be able to open up to all students. We were able to open up culinary at Oak Grove for our Lomerton students. So the only program right now that we have that's not open to all four high schools is our ag program. However, they are rewriting the curriculum at the state level and actually asked one of our instructors to be a part of that rewriting team. And so that's Mr. Roberts, that somehow he'll be participating in that. And hopefully it will go live two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. And then once that happens, if they do move the direction they're hoping to go, then we should be able to also open it up on their campuses and bring students that are interested from our other campuses. So overall this year, our high school programs include our two-year programs and then our one credit programs, which is like STEM and ECS. ECS is the extension of the cyber classes, and then STEM actually built into our engineering program at our campus. But altogether, we have seventeen hundred and five kids that are in those programs. And then in our middle schools, the five middle schools, we have seventeen hundred and twenty-two. So we have a total of three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven kids that are, that are receiving some type of career technical education, starting at the seventh grade level and moving up. So do you guys have any questions for me about CT? All right.
I'd love to come see what y'all do. I've never been on campus in Purvis. And I talked to Dr. Hampton. I'll talk with him next week. We actually had a legislator yesterday that was on workforce development, who was asking me a lot of questions that he would like to as well come see what we do. And so I was, I'm gonna get with Dr. Hampton on that about potentially coming on campus, just so we can be COVID safe and working out, just sort of.
We would love to.
To get to see what all really happens. I had no idea we had any kids involved in it, which is great.
Yeah, it's fascinating.
It is.
Roll under cars, get welded, all kinds of stuff.
All, all kinds of things. I'm a firm believer in it. I have four children of my own, and all four of them, this is my first year without a kid in school, but all four are CTE completers. All four took advantage of the scholarship that is tied with PRCC just by completing one of our programs. So it's a life-changing experience. If I could have one of my boys to do the automotive, I would have been happy, but no.
So what I, what we brought for you tonight, though, is a creation of our metal fabrication and our, um, our metal fabrication and our. That's why we're here tonight. It was just nice. Um, they're doing it based kind of on some of the areas that you represent. But also our, um, our kids come from four different high schools in the district. So we wanted to give you something that represented the four.
And what was that cut with?
The metal lathe in metal fabrication.
Yep.
And then the tools that the, you want to. So I said that earlier to say, Mr. Hampton gets two because of.
That's awesome.
They made so that you could stain them to match wherever you would like, or paint to match whatever you would like to place them. Then if you would like right about the center, we'll do it for you.
That is super.
We've come up with this spring of income.
Is that all Miss Kelly? Is that all Miss Kelly?
I want to get a picture.
Want a picture? Yeah, let's get a picture.
We never get up this much.
We waited.
I need to get up every few minutes. It's long. No, no, you need to stand in the middle. You're just super special. I'd probably get a short line.
Can you get her a smile?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Hampton, was that all free?
Yeah, that was none of this. Again, Ms. Kelly is another example of the great faculty and staff that we have in our district. And there's great things that are happening in our CTE programs. And I just wanted to highlight them this month because it is National CTE Month. Just wanted to highlight them and some great things. And I do believe that the better days are ahead for our CTE programs. We're going to look to increase and add programs and many, many of the standards allow us to, to, uh, allow so that we can prepare our kids not only for college, but also for careers moving forward. Thank you.
Be great. Thank you. All right, item number eleven is the, to set the next regular scheduled meeting for March the eighth. Be a live stream again at six PM. Here at the district office.
So moved.
Exactly. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeremy? Your call.
Yes.
Item number. All right, item number twelve is consent agenda items. And before I go around the room and ask anyone if you have any questions, I'd just like to recognize Chief Pedal. We know you lost one of your members this, this, uh, this month, Mr. Daryl Lee and his family. Just want to recognize him tragically lost in the car accident. We're definitely, he and his family, he's standing there in our prayers and thongs with the school resource officers in their department. Thank you.
Right.
All right, item, so item number twelve is a consent agenda. Do you need attention, somebody's coming? Give it to Chance, Mr. Mayo.
No question.
All right, I'll open the floor up for a motion.
Make the motion, agree, uh, to set the consent agenda items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Go all the way to item number thirteen, which is other. Have the other. Item fourteen is consider executive session. We got one student matter. Two personnel matters. Actually, three. Let's see the. Number three is due to super court evaluation discussion. Okay, and then one more attorney matter, actually, the discussion indeed, sorry. Didn't see, we lived it. So item number four for motion, consider executive sessions for those reasons.
I'm going to reconsider executive session for, you know.
I have a motion. Thank you, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion at the end of executive session.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Person here in the dignity.
Stop the live transition.
That was the funniest thing to me, I think.
I did. I had to work all the time. I was terrible. I'm just.
But that was a link to people back in the heart.
All right, go ahead.
Item sixteen is an executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item seventeen is to recess. Motion?
So moved.
Have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're in recess. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.